You put.
Looks like the Brady Bunch.
Uh, yeah, we could sing the song if you want to. We can, we can start. I know, I know the words. We can, we can make it happen.
That would be a YouTube sensation, wouldn't it?
Well, yes.
Linda, are you talking to us? Cause I don't hear you. I see your lips.
She.
Oh.
She's, she's trying to figure out how to unmute herself.
Okay. I see her lips moving. I'm trying to read her lips. Nope.
Linda, on the bottom of your screen, if you drag your cursor down, there'll be a bar that pops up that will have a microphone. You don't have it. Okay.
She said, I know that, but it's not working. Have I ever told you that I, I'm hard of hearing? So I'm really good at leading, reading lips.
Show me the money.
Are we ready to start? Linda, can you just give us, I guess, a thumbs up or a thumbs down if you're.
Looks like she got it.
We lost Linda.
Here she comes.
Here she comes.
There she is. She's still on mute.
I, I was about to join the meeting again. It just wouldn't work.
We can hear you.
Okay.
Well, it is seven oh one actually, and we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order with all seven board members present. Um, it is Monday, April 27th, 2020. Um, if there is a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
All in favor, actually, we should probably do a roll call vote. Sorry about that. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio, yes. Melodya Payne?
Yes.
Shanda Olmstead?
Yes.
Susan Ward?
Yes.
Harold Winkert?
Yes.
Okay, the, um, agenda is approved seven oh. First item up is the consent agenda. Dr. Cobb, do anything you need to go over on that for us?
Now, the, the first three, three oh one, three oh two, three oh three are all normal year to year items, uh, on the consent agenda. Uh, just so that you all know, the ORC board position will, will go to Matt Skirman. Um, he will replace, um, now I forgot his name, uh, uh, Mr. Miller, uh, who is our track coach and also a, a local sheriff, um, deputy here in town. And then of course our surplus items, um, which are all of the, the projector cameras that we took out of the high school. Um, we will do a, a sell of them, much like we did with the, with the old MacBooks and stuff that we had. So, uh, everything is pretty normal stuff, but those are the two, uh, items otherwise.
Um, on the map, is that something we have to pay that amount every year?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Was that Susan on the second?
Yeah, or Harold, doesn't matter.
Or Harold, okay. Just trying to help Terry out down there. It's a little hard sometimes to, to figure that out. Um, we'll do a roll call vote on that. Linda Alderman, yes or no?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio, yes. Melodya Payne?
Yes.
Shanda Olmstead?
Yes.
Susan Ward?
Yes.
Harold Winkert?
Yes.
And the consent, consent agenda is passed seven oh. We did not have any comments from the public this evening, so we'll move down to section five. Uh, the first part, 5.01 is the MOU with OEA.
Uh, the MOU that we created, um, was to address the evaluation cycle, um, that we were not able to, to get to based upon the school closure from, uh, from the governor. Uh, so ultimately what this comes down to is that, that we have to evaluate new teachers, second year teachers, new teachers to the district in their first or second year, and any teachers that transfer positions to a new type of position. So if you went from fifth grade to fourth grade, you wouldn't be in that. But if you went from fifth grade to first grade, you would be, uh, be asked to be evaluated again. So there are about 45 teachers that should have been evaluated again prior to April 15th. Not all of them were able to do so because we shut down about, what, our last day, I think was March 12th. Um, so this MOU ultimately allows us to roll over, uh, those evaluation cycles to the following year, um, and make sure that we still evaluate teachers according to the number of times that we indicated that they would be evaluated through the negotiated agreement. It passed, um, overwhelmingly in favor of with, uh, with OEA, uh, in their ratification vote, uh, this afternoon. Not all teachers voted, but certainly enough to get us to where we needed to be. And again, it was overwhelmingly in favor of, of making sure that we roll these overs. So it is, it is now in your hands to, to approve, uh, the MOU.
Any questions for Dr. Cobb's on the MOU?
No.
Is there a, a motion with, we do need to take action on this. Would somebody like to make a motion?
So move.
And I'll second that.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded that we approve the MOU as presented. We'll do a roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio, yes. Melodya Payne?
Yes.
Shanda Olmstead?
Yes.
Susan Ward?
Yes.
Harold Winkert?
Yes.
And that passes seven oh. We are moving down to section 5.02. Um, this is a, just for discussion, uh, Dr. Cobb's will present about the CARES Act.
Okay. So you guys have received a draft of the CARES Act, and I'll show you a little document, but you guys all have it. I believe it's in, in your board docs packet. The, the CARES Act is, is yet to be completely approved. Um, we're, we're still kind of waiting on, on things to come to the state, but we've been given, uh, clearance to, to begin to present as if we were to be given the funds that are represented there for. So, um, the estimate for USD 290 is $392,704, I believe. Let me just check and make sure that that is correct. $740. With just under 11,000 of that going to Sacred Heart. Um, so just so that you guys know, the money came into, uh, USD, into KSDE through USD 290, uh, in the same manner that title funds are, are, um, provided. So a, a lot of this is based upon socioeconomic status of our communities, which is why as you start looking through that, that list, some people are getting much more dollars than, than other districts are getting. But there were a couple of questions about why we funnel the funds through Sacred Heart. And, and the answer to that is that the title funds that Sacred Heart receives ultimately go through us. Well, Sacred Heart will spend those dollars, request them from us, and then we fund that, that money through them. Typically it's through personnel for them, uh, but then also we will have money that we provide in services that they have to pay for out of that money. So, um, it's, I don't know why they do it that way. It's simply the method in which is the, the money is provided from the federal government because that is a private institution housed within, uh, the USD 290 school district. It's the only private institution that receives title funds, um, even though there are other private institutions, um, with, within our communities. So the CARES Act money is the same and their allotment of that will be $11,000. So they will have to request that money the same as we do. We will not get, we will not see $392,000 come into our account. That money will be housed at KSDE. We will have to spend that money and then ask for reimbursement. So we will create an account, we will spend out of that, then ask for reimbursement from KSDE. That money will be funneled back to us. Any money that is not spent or allocated from us out of the CARES Act by September of 2021 will go back to the federal government. So if we don't have a way to utilize those dollars in response to, um, relief efforts that are taking place within our communities, that money doesn't stay with us. It goes back to the government, uh, at the end of September of 2021. Any questions at least about the allocation piece of it?
So, uh, Sacred Heart is the only one that gets that? And do they request that through us, but not through the state, right?
They request it through us. So th- those dollars are allocated to us. It, it isn't really a request form that we put out there. We fill out some documents, but the numbers are based upon our at-risk students, um, and, and students who are low socioeconomic. So there is a percentage that they get based off of, of what we have.
So would other schools be able to do this too?
I don't think that the other community, uh, the other private schools have enough students to, to be identified with that. I would guess that, and I'll look at Terry. It's, it's the only thing that I could come up is, is that, one, they may not be accredited institutions. Two, they may not have enough students. I don't know that about any of them, but if I just have to make assumptions as to why they don't, that would be where I would start.
I was just curious for the fact that you hear all this stuff in the news, uh, public versus private and the funding that's going around.
Yeah. So, but it's the only, it's the only private institution in our community that receives those, those title dollars and subsequently will, will receive CARES Act dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions about allocations? So if there's not, I mean, the next, the next thing we need to know, um, is that the, the expectation of this, this money is to enhance services that are typically already provided or to meet several of the, the existing guidelines, or I should say, and to meet several of the existing guidelines. So, um, you can do things that are, that you can, you can enhance, but probably not build new in terms of, we're just going to provide this new thing unless it's been provided in the past. So you can think about mental health services being one of those. We can talk about providing mental health services and we provide those in a number of ways. We might be able to provide a, um, a, a therapist in our buildings, but if we'd never done anything for therapy before, we would probably have to get approval in terms of how that, that was being, uh, provided because it wouldn't be an existing resource within, within the district. So you, you're going to have to jump through some hoops and develop how this is going to work, uh, with KSDE and what your plans are. But they, they're very clear on what, what the dollars can be used for. One is, um, that you can do anything in terms of how you address students with, um, with, through IDEA and, and certainly through the Adult Education and Family Literacy Act. So there are a number of things that, that we, we can look at there. Um, you can look at your coordination and preparedness response, and you guys can see those in one through 12, but I've highlighted several. One is in the first one, the IDEA and Adult Education and Family Literacy Act. A, a second one is number four with, uh, the activities to address the unique needs of childrens with disabilities and English language learners. Now, uh, another one is number seven, purchasing supplies to sanitize and clean facilities. Even, um, prior to COVID, when we were seeing the flu outbreak that we saw this year, um, utilizing the 360 machine, uh, and taking it to each individual building certainly created some, um, some difficulties for us. Could use COVID, uh, relief fund dollars to buy one of those for every building so that you didn't have to transport it and you could, you could much more frequently do, um, disinfecting a- across the district. Be one way that you could utilize those dollars. Another is number eight, which is with, one we've talked about and, and how we provide meals and, and how we, uh, deliver meals to students. Um, another one is on number nine, which is purchasing educational technology. I will tell you that I've had this conversation with Dean multiple times throughout the last week is there continues to be this desire to purchase computers. I think Dean would come over here and tell you that we have enough computers for every student in our district right now. Um, and that purchasing more may not provide anything different for us.
I have a question on that, on that note. Uh, do we have, would it, could it be used to provide hotspots, more hotspots to kids?
So I will tell your conversation, yes, we could use it to provide hotspots. Um, that's certainly one way that we could do it. Dean and I had a discussion today that there is an opportunity for districts to create their own Wi-Fi network that is, um, available to students in a 10-mile radius of the network. Um, and, and subsequently what we could do is we could create an internet system for all of our students. You wouldn't have to have home internet anymore. Your students would be able to access our Wi-Fi if they live within a 10-mile radius of where we put, um, our, our spot. You call it a tower, but I don't think it would be a tower. Right? So, um, if we could, if we could do that, that would certainly be a way. It wouldn't cost us, um, near, uh, the amount of money as it, as it would to do some other things. Uh, I think the, the cost to actually do it is, is well within our range. And then I think there's a cost for somebody to have the ability to access it via some device, like a hotspot or whatever it happens to be. Um, but certainly that would be a conversation that we could utilize, uh, or that we could have in utilizing those dollars and what we wanted to accomplish.
Would you then plan on, for the students that are outside of 10, the 10-mile radius? What would, what would they do?
Well, Lauren, I don't know that, and I'd have to look at our, our boundary map. Any of the students that would be outside of a 10-mile radius are probably outside of our district boundaries. Um, and at that point in time, one of the things that we would probably tell them, if you're interested in coming to our district outside of district boundaries, that you would have to be responsible for your own Wi-Fi, that we would, we would provide it for anybody within the district boundaries. But outside of that, if you've got it, you got it. And if you don't, you don't. But the, the vast majority of our students, um, who live within side of our boundaries, and I want to say all of them that live within side of our boundaries would be within the 10-mile radius. You think about a 10-mile radius from the center of town would get you all the way to, um, the highway to Baldwin, would get you south all the way past Princeton, would get you west to Pomona and get you east, uh, to Wellsville. Um, and you, you circulate that. And again, I think our, our boundaries all fall within that, but, um, that would be a conversation that we would have to have.
I certainly would be in favor of anything that we could do to ensure home internet for all of our, uh, families. And, uh, so I'm a hundred percent on support of looking into that. And uh, so I'm 100% on support of looking into that.
Yeah. Okay, um, another one would be number 10, providing mental health services. Um, again, what, one of the things that we're we're hearing from parents is that having your kids being stuck at home is very difficult for them and not not being able to socialize and and not being able to do um, the things that they want to do. Hopefully over the summer, they'll relax some of those things, but I I will just tell you, I had a conversation with um, with Dr. Ransome earlier this evening and and if they're going to be relaxed, um, I don't think they're going to be relaxed quickly. I think it's one of those things that they will settle into. Um, so I I still think that that we're going to have to um, work under some some guidelines for social distancing over the course of the next month, month and a half, however long it happens to be. And and the county will make some of those decisions for us. But even at that, another month and a half gets us into June, close to July. Um, and and then you're only a month away from school starting and and you start dealing with with trying to get kids uh, ready to come back to a norm that they haven't seen for for several months. And 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 certainly we're going to have to address some of those things. And and I think the the mental health status of our kids, not not necessarily to to say that that they need therapeutic support, but the, just the understanding of what it means to be back in a classroom, what it means to to treat people, to communicate with people, how you follow uh, social norms, how you how you communicate within a classroom, how you, how you do all of those things are certainly going to to take um, some time for us to get back to normal there. Um, and then the last one would be planning and implementing activities related to summer learning um, and and after-school programs. And and we've already had some conversations about what we could possibly do with a summer school program. Certainly a very robust one uh, next summer as as things are hopefully more normal next summer than they are this summer. Um, ultimately, I think what we would like to do is is open up a summer school platform for all kids. Um, not the kids that we identify, but anybody who is is interested in some type of of learning uh, very similar to what we had kind of discussed in in terms of a a change to our summer school this year, and we never really got to. But um, more like a camp environment where maybe for three days, we're doing these types of things and then maybe nothing on on Thursday and Friday, but then the following week, we do different things with with kids and they can sign up for any of those camps they would choose to attend. But doing some things to really try to overcome reading instruction and math instruction and science instruction that that we haven't been able to to hit um, and a and a lot of of social norming type of things to get kids back in a routine of of how to deal with one another. So um, those, there are 12 different areas in which the grant can be used for. Those were the ones that were highlighted uh, by us in in terms of the ones that we had at least mentioned through the board update and had some discussions about. But are there any any conversations that you all would like to have about CARES Act dollars and and what we might do as a district?
Uh, Dr. Cobb, I had written some down when we saw this the other day in the update. Um, you pretty much hit on all the ones that I was thinking was important. Um, I I really feel supportive of the food and delivery of trying to continue that. I think that's really important in the current time we're living in. Um, the more rigorous uh, summer school. But something I was thinking like on reading for part of our summer deal was, and some of you can help me out here, I think like the State Library or some of that has some online platform stuff that we could share to our kids and they can read some books that way. If they're gonna have these devices through the summer and have internet access, that may be a way we get uh, reading materials in their hands. And then uh, the other thing I had was like more online platform of like math materials or science materials. And uh, I do like your idea of additional sanitizing equipment and materials. So we're not paying our guys to keep bouncing stuff around. There's one piece of equipment designated to that building and it stays in that building.
Yeah.
I like, I like um, the idea that we should hit heavy on the summer remediation program, the summer school. Number one, I like the layout of it being a camp, but also um, these kids have lost a lot of, they've they've lost a lot just because of the circumstances. And I think it's also um, been realized how important the teachers are to the kids and how much they can do with the with the with the instruction to the children as they are there, not just online. So I really hope that we can help the kids uh, gain what they've lost these last few months. And I think summer school is really important.
And even, and even enrichment before or after school, you know, um, enrichment hours or times that they can have guided assistance in areas that we may not even be aware that they're lacking with this year and how that has all gone. I don't know, something like that's possible. Um, but I think too, our, right now, our capital funds are fairly robust. And I think if we need to be buying cleaning machines for the schools to help cycle through, if we end up using as much as we can to um, sub, to really beef up what we need in terms of instruction because that's so important to our kids and progression. Um, if we need um, cleaning devices, the 360s or whatever, you know, one consideration is to consider some of that out of capital too, or a mixture thereof because that money will go quickly, I suspect.
Well, I I think that we're gonna maybe have a more difficult time in in utilizing the entirety of these funds than maybe we we think that we will. Um, because one, we we can't supplant what we intended to to spend anyways. So um, so we had talked about like a speech path at one point in time. So one of the things that um, we have to think about in in doing this is that um, we're going to have to provide services for students who did not um, obtain or parents opted out of, and we'll use speech as an example, um, services for the last seven weeks and and maybe uh, even beyond that, depending on on what happens. So at some point in time, we're gonna provide compensatory services for those families. Um, and we're gonna try to make those things up. So asking the the staff members that we currently have to to do so without any help is going to be a tall order because we're going to have to address the needs of the kids that we that we know we're going to be doing regardless of what happened. Uh, and then we're going to have additional expectations on top of that to to make sure that we meet the needs of the things that we didn't accomplish in the in the last seven weeks. If we choose not to do something with, and again, I'm using speech as a as an example. If we choose not to do something there, we're going to wind up paying con- contract services to fill those gaps anyways. Um, and and again, we can do all of those things out of COVID relief dollars and and save ourselves on on the backend. But I think there was some misconceptions about how we wanted to utilize this money for staff. The purpose of of hiring the staff was to solely recover what students have lost within this this timeframe, not to just add more staff members. So one way or the other, we're going to have to provide compensatory services. So we can either do so by actually hiring a a staff member and and utilizing them in the capacity that we see fit, or we're going to have to provide contract services for them and ultimately, they're gonna be under somebody else's umbrella and we won't necessarily have control of what they do within our buildings, the times that they're there, so on and so forth. So I wanted to be clear on what the what the idea was behind that. There's also discussion about about pre-K. And what I can tell you is, again, we can't supplant what we're doing. But if we, if, for instance, we did not have um, the the dollars coming in through um, through aid for four-year-old at-risk to overcome all of the 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 cost of that contract, we could use COVID relief dollars to overcome the rest of it because it's obvious that the number of students that we have enrolling in our preschool activities are in part due to what's happening in our community right now. So just, I I just wanted to be clear about the reasons why we had this conversation, not to try to offset something that we that we should do otherwise, but to draw an understanding that the reasons that we're talking about these issues are because of the COVID pandemic um, and not because we just want to add something else. We are going to have to add those things, um, or or at least we're going to have to address those needs of those kids one way or the other. If they come out of our general fund, um, that's that's one way to do it. But again, if you don't spend all of your COVID relief dollars, it's going back. So you might as well use your COVID relief dollars for the things that we think that we could spend it for. And again, we'll get, we'll get more clarification on that as as the guidelines um, are are made clearer to us. But I just wanted to be to be upfront with why we're having those discussions and why it might be important for us.
Um, I'd like to add one thing. I think though, I I understand what you're saying, but uh, what I worry about is that funding coming 2021, 2022 school year, you know, we wouldn't have the COVID money anymore. And then we have to figure out how to take on the those additional salaries. I'm not saying we don't need it, it's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying, if we're gonna need this, we still have to figure it out in the long run, how we finance it too, after this COVID money is gone.
Well, I think the the initial idea behind that is that you have a one-year, uh, you have a one-year frame of time to accomplish the task. Um, and at that point, we, anybody that we would hire under those ideas would be under the assumption that they have a a one-year contract with us.
Okay, I'm just.
We would be very clear with them upfront that, hey, look, and again, if we use speech as an example, that we need somebody for one year as a speech pathologist. There are, there are a number of people out there that that look for substitute speech positions that that do short-term um, short-term positions because they they don't want to be locked down to to a job. Um, specifically in speech pathology, when the, when the prices fluctuate uh, as much as they do and oftentimes you can maneuver around and and make more money. So I don't think that we would have a problem identifying somebody that would be with us just for a year and being very upfront with them. Um, but again, this will, this will all come back to how we choose to to spend um, the Relief CARE Act dollars. Um, but I, again, I wanted to be very clear about the reasons why we were floating it, the way that we were floating it because at some point in time, I guess I would rather utilize those dollars to benefit our district than to give them back to the feds.
I agree with that. I'm just saying, I I want to figure out how, because some of this even came up before we had this pandemic, that we already knew we had a waiting list, that we already knew we had a growing need uh, for at-risk. Uh, that was one of the reasons all of us decided to add an additional uh, pre-K and stuff at Garfield because we knew there was a need there. I I I'm just saying, I don't think the need's gonna go away, Dr. Cobb. I think we're gonna have to figure this out. This isn't a fisticuff today, but I think eventually we're gonna have to figure this out.
Yep.
And I think the explanation helps, Dr. God, because I too was one that was a little bit uh, misunderstanding how, you know, a one-year contract might work, you know what I mean? And uh, and then I piggyback on what Susan said. I certainly would uh, look forward to a proposal that would provide in some fashion additional sanitizing for each building. I think, you know, so as you roll this out and as we review it, I think both of those um, are interesting and and probably not the way I was looking at it at first, you know, with like speech path or another source. So uh, and then as I echoed earlier, I think as long as we have devices for everybody, one-to-one, and we have uh, Intranet, uh, I think those are great uh, uses as well. And I think those are well past COVID. I mean, that could be something used by this district going forward, uh, promoting technology in many different ways. So very good.
Harold and I agree. I think if they, if we could find a way to provide internet to every student household that we have, um, boy, I think we would find one more way to make um, Ottawa USD 290 a shining star in the state. How in the heck did they accomplish that? And and how do other people model their business for ours? Um, so it would, it would certainly be a huge benefit, especially at a time when you're probably going to be talking about the unemployment rate of Franklin County reaching close to 30% um, and and the other things that are going to happen. If we can take some of those burdens off of our of our parents, then it'd be a a huge deal.
Um, I I think I've said this to you several times, Dr. Cobb. I think um, we're only gonna be better in a lot of areas for going through this, as crazy as that may sound because it's not fun every day. Um, but I think it is definitely going to make us better educators, a better school district. Um, for some of these things that we're having to learn on the fly and uh, this virtual learning. I think I've said it to you, one of the things I think is gonna help is if we have a kid out on illness, we've already been there, done that, and we're gonna know how to keep that kid up to pace.
Yep, yep.
I I have a question about the devices. I guess I'm, I I really want to have the like good quality, really good devices for all the students and they can use this internet service. Um, but I guess I'm just confused, why, if we have those already, why, why weren't they given out? Why did we ask what people had or go through that?
I'll bring, I'll bring Dean over here and he can, he can help address this question.
See me up there. Uh, we had the schools individually survey and ask each student, each family, if they needed a device. If they did, they were provided a device. And I know the first week, they went through most of those pickups. Second week, there were some more people residually that came in and said, hey, I forgot about that. Can I sign up my student for this as well? Um, we tried to limit it to one per family just because it was easier to track for us. We ended up sending several to several families. So some families have two or three, uh, some households that have multiple kids in different buildings uh, all have their own devices as well. So we still have devices. If anyone's watching right now and wants a device, contact your principal. They'll sign you up, they'll check out a device from the school.
Okay, yeah. Because, I mean, I have three students and we're still shuffling devices. I did, I was one of those people who finally asked for one. But we're still still shuffling because we don't have three. So when we're trying to do this online learning, we have to, it can't just be, everybody has like a sit-down and and have their learning time. And I'm sure there are a lot of other families that are the same way, that are having to shuffle. So I'm not sure why we made families do that. If we have all these devices just sitting around, they need to be in use, I guess is my thought.
Yeah, I I don't disagree with that. And so if if you want to contact Mr. Interess and and make sure that he knows you need another device, we'll make sure that we get one. Um, but I think we made it, we made it clear to our principals that if somebody asks for a device, that we had devices ready for them um, and and ready to go. I know that um, what what many of our schools tried to um, tried to guard against was just sending devices home for people who, one, were choosing to do packets and not digital learning for, that that we didn't have devices just going out to people just because they wanted a device, but because there was a need for a device. Um, because we we do know that there's a possibility that once the devices go home, they don't come back in in the quality that we need them to come back in, that um, that we may have to to deal with a number of things to to fix broken screens, broken keyboards. So our our teachers and our staff, specifically at the elementary levels, uh, where they had to hand these out, are are very diligent and trying to make sure that we take care of the devices that we have because they utilize them all the time. Um, so I I'm, I'm not surprised that not um, that not everybody, every student got a device. That that doesn't surprise me. Uh, but I I am a little surprised that if people have contacted the district or the or the school about getting additional devices, that we haven't been very clear that we've, that we would give them one. All they have to do is.
Oh, I I know, I I did get the the, uh, so we have two devices. We had one for a middle schooler and then I finally did request a device. Because even though like the the lowest grades have a packet, they have their videos that they have to watch for each topic every day.
Right, so i- if you need another device or anybody listening needs another device, they just need to contact their principal and and we will get them for them. We'll, we'll hand them out with their packets or or we'll, we'll set up a time that they can meet us and we'll, we'll provide them for them. Absolutely, no problems.
Any other questions for Dr. Cobb about the CARES Act?
Well, I I don't, I don't have questions, but I want to go back to the fact that um, even though we've had devices, even though the kids have had videos to watch, and even though they've had packets to work on, the the lack of actual teaching time for, you know, teacher there with them, I think is going to impact our children down the line. And that, that weighs heavily on me. And so I would hope that we would spend a a good portion of this money, not only in remediation and in summer school, but also to en- enhance the learning. Um, I'm I'm proud of our teachers for this last year, developing those essential skills so that our kids are, they knew what they had to put out there for our kids to learn. But it wasn't everything that they would have taught them between March and now. And so I'm, I'm, I really want to to uh, again, say that I think it's important that that we work on on the remediation and the enhancement.
And and Linda, I would echo that. I mean, our teachers have done an enormous amount of work in a very short amount of time to try to to educate students in a fashion that we, that none of us thought we of us thought we would be needing to do. Um, some of our teachers have been doing this type of platform for a while and are struggling mightily by not having kids. It's one thing that, to be able to teach via a digital platform, but when you still see your kids every day, those, those gaps that we have in the digital platform aren't, aren't near as, as wide or as deep as they are when we, when we don't see our kids every day. So it's a, it's a struggle all the way around. It's a struggle for our kids. It's a struggle for our teachers. I, we're, we are going to have some, some serious hurdles to overcome next year when we start, when we start thinking, and again, all working under the assumption that we start school on time and we start in a normal setting. Even if we are able to do those things, we're, we're going to have enormous hurdles to overcome because our T, our students have not had normal instruction for seven weeks. And we're going to couple that with a three-month summer vacation, right? So we're going to have a, a large period of time in which we already deal with a summer slide. We're going to have seven weeks prior to that, in which we really didn't have access to our kids in the same manner. We are really going to have to do some amazing things, um, not only next year, but for years to come, to over, to really overcome what, what this pandemic has done to the education of, of our students and our, and our education systems overall. They are never going to be the same. We're going to, as, as Chris says, we're going to come out better for this on the other end, but it is going to drastically change the structure of what schools look like. Um, and again, who knows what school looks like next year? Um, none of us have been told what we're going to be able to do. I know that they're having that discussion at the, at the post-secondary level about what it may or may not look like, and certainly we're having it here. Um, but, but one thing that we do know is that we're going to have to do more next year than we probably ever had to do before.
And I think there's also going to have to be the realization, and I know Amy's probably, probably already got this started, but the realization that when a fourth grader comes back next year, it's really going to be half-third, half-fourth.
Yeah, certainly, certainly we, and we've already started having the discussions about how our, how our, um, grade levels are going to have to talk to the grade level above them about what they didn't, what they didn't accomplish in the last quarter. And, and those things, those standards that we're going to have to catch up for them, just to be able to do the fourth grade material.
Right.
You're going to have to learn in five quarters, you're going to have to learn what you learned in five quarters and four quarters. Um, and we, and we all know that, um, we're, it's really going to be more than that, because we're also going to have to deal with, with summer issues. We're going to have to deal with, um, with differences. And, and if there are any change in, in, in instruction and, and how schools look at the beginning and next year becomes even worse. So there are, again, major hurdles to overcome, but we have incredible staff. We have, you know, Amy is here, Josh is here. They all do amazing things. Dean is here, who, who's going to set up a, a number of things for us when we need them. Um, and, and we will meet that challenge. We'll meet it head-on, but it, it will not, it will not be easy and it will not be something that we overcome in a week.
Well, the good thing is, it's not just Franklin County. It's, it's world.
Yes, yes.
I didn't get to say earlier that I also agree with the 360, the sanitizing equipment, anything like that, because that not only affects our students, it affects the parents who have to miss work, who either are ill themselves or have to take care of that. So, I mean, even before this virus, I think that that is something that we need to address. And I think this money is a very good way to get that. And then I would just second Chris that I wouldn't want to support any staff with this, that then we would have to try and figure out how to pay for it at a later time, when the money is not, when this money is not there.
All right. Anything else on the CARES Act? Any other questions or comments?
No.
All right. Well, we are going to move on here. We do need to have an executive session tonight for negotiations. Um, we will need about 30 minutes. If somebody would like to read, um, the executive session statement, if you have that available. Um, if not, I can provide that. We do need to invite Dr. Cobb's.
And Mr. Robinson.
And Mr. Robinson, yep.
Yep.
Okay, Madam President, I move that the board go into executive session to discuss teacher negotiations pursuant to the exception for employer-employee negotiations under coma and that the open meeting shall resume at, what, 8:10?
8:10, yep.
8:10, and we invite, uh, Dr. Cobb's and Mr. Robinson.
Second, we'll go up here. Yep. All right.
And we will do a roll call vote on that. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie D'Andrio?
Yes.
Olivia Payne?
Yes.
Shannon Olmstead?
Yeah.
Susan Warren?
Yes.
Carol Lindert?
Yes.
That passes 7-0. We will adjourn to executive session.
Okay, out of executive session.
All right, ma'am President, I move that we go out of executive session.
Second.
Roll call vote, Linda Alderman.
Yes.
Chris Cunningham.
Yes.
Julie D'Andrea, yes. Molydia Payne.
Yes, sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
Susan Ward.
Yes.
Harold Winger.
Yes.
Okay, that passes 7-0 and we are back in regular session. You have all been presented with a personnel report if somebody would like to make a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
And we will do roll call vote. Linda Alderman.
Yes.
Chris Cunningham.
Yes.
Julie D'Andrea, yes. Molydia Payne.
Yes.
Shanda Olmstead.
Yes.
Susan Ward.
Yes.
Harold Winger.
Yes.
And that passes 7-0. We are down to announcements. Dr. Cobb's.
Well, I was really hoping that we would be able to have some conversations about graduation, but the governor did not make any statements tonight. So we'll wait to hear from her and wait to get guidance from the county to determine what we can do. Just so you know, we are brainstorming different ideas. All the way from we can have graduation as normal, which I don't think we can, we will be allowed to do, to the craziest things that you can come up with for a graduation ceremony. But we will celebrate our students in some fashion when we at least have some parameters and how we can do so. I also want to let you know that, you know, we had discussed, I told you in the update, that we're looking at trying to prepare for what next year might look like. We have several scenarios which I will share with you in the update this week. But I also want to let you know that we're reaching out to a group of parents to get some feedback from them about what's gone well with this scenario, what they would like to see in school next year. What are the things in this scenario that they feel like we have to continue? What are the things that they would like to see go away? So that we can get at least some parental input on how well this whole continual learning process has gone as we begin to make plans for our next school year in August. So that's all I really have from announcements because there isn't much else going on.
Thank you, Dr. Cobb's. At this time, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Someone.
Everyone.
Who is ready to go?
Was there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I will do roll call vote. Linda Alderman.
Yes.
Chris Cunningham.
Yes.
Julie D'Andrea, yes. Molydia Payne.
Yes.
Shanda Olmstead.
Yes.
Susan Ward.
Yes.
Harold Winger.
Yes.
And that passes 7-0. Meeting adjourned.
All right, thanks everybody.
Thanks. Have a good night.